Okay, we'll rise and take the question.
I'd like to say the flag of the United States of America into the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice from."
Okay, so this is our September 2nd meeting, May 1st, this board meeting. And we started with a motion to approve those board meetings from August 19th, 2021.
Move.
Second.
Any questions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead. Citizens comments, um, Wheels on Wheels, up by the Michael Paul.
Okay, I'm allowed Tucker, you may not need it.
Well, hi everybody, my name is Trion Baldwin, and I am a board member for the Baldensville Wheels on Wheels, been there, well, just under a year, I think it is. And we're here tonight because we just wanted to share with you an upcoming event that we're planning to celebrate the Baldensville Wheels on Wheels 50th anniversary, so, big deal, we're very excited. Lot of, lot of time and energy in work over the years, and looking forward to celebrating it. The plan is to have it September 25th, it's a Saturday, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And we are looking to hold it at the Senior Center, the Cantonwood Senior Center. We will have appetizers hors d'oeuvres, which we will make in our kitchen, and also some non-alcoholic beverages, looking to do a welcome greeting, have, people have an opportunity to come in and meet the board members, meet Donna and Jeff, our cook, and basically, you know, see the facility, and just have an opportunity to celebrate with us, in recognizing a pretty significant milestone, especially an opportunity for our volunteers to be able to be there and be present, and celebrate and recognize all of their hard work, because we wouldn't exist if it weren't for all of our volunteers, so, what else? The plan right now is, the hope to put up two canopy tents, I handed out to most of you kind of a little layout, I overplan things, so, we'll have the two canopy tents outside, the intention is to put the food in a buffet style out there, with volunteers serving, a little bit of seating out under the other canopy tent, for those who maybe aren't comfortable being inside, you know, with the whole COVID thing, they'll have still an opportunity to join us, we've got the pavilion with all of the seating there as well, and then also, we would like to have the rest of the tables set up indoors, for people to come in and eat and drink, masks required, of course, when entering the building, except when they're seated, to eat and to drink, we'll have live piano music from Phil Sterling, and just a three-hour event to kind of enjoy and celebrate as safely as possible, we thought with the extra space outside, that would give us an opportunity to spread out a little bit more, and for people who maybe aren't comfortable in the tight quarters, to be able to, still be able to come and celebrate with us in a comfortable atmosphere. So, if you have any questions, or concerns, or thoughts, we certainly welcome them. But that's, did I miss anything, Donna?
No.
Okay.
You said three hours, what are the hours?
Five to eight p.m., I'm sorry, I thought I mentioned that.
I think Chuck McCullough will be over next week to just check out with you, and see what you need, and make sure that there's nothing that you're gonna, you know, just put stakes in the ground, you're not going to do electrical line, or gas line type thing, he's aware of it, and he'll come over and be a help to you, I think, and make it work better. So this is not gonna be like a sit-down dinner, this is just kind of a, you come, say hi to everybody, and have some, something to eat, and leave.
It can, yeah, be a pop in and out, I would guess that some people will come and stay for a longer duration, like our volunteers, you know, they'll probably sit and be social, but yeah, that's, the idea is, it doesn't have to be, it's not gonna be a schedule all night long, that you need to be there for the duration, you can come and visit, say hello, meet whom you want, have a bite to eat, and, and be on your way, so kind of open house style, yes.
And we have some dignitaries coming.
And we do have some dignitaries who are planning to attend, I don't have that list, Donna's the brains of the, of the organization, but, yeah, so, that's, that's the hope and the plan, and then is also, we, we wind up with the canopies up in the parking lot area, and then only stake right around the perimeter of the, the left side of the parking lot area, by the back door, so that we wouldn't be worried about going too far out in the grounds, and also, that time of year, the grounds could be wet, nobody wants to be walking out in wet grass, and have the bugs, and so, that gives us a dry space for all of that as well.
You're probably gonna find that Chuck was gonna tell you he doesn't want to put stakes in the parking lot, is it targeted?
No, ah, we'll have to go back and review that. No, the, the plan for the, the inside holes, that's a good point, is to do weights, to weight them down, and so, it's really, it's just the perimeter into the grounds outside of the, the parking area, I'm sorry, I wasn't very clear about that, yes.
He doesn't have your very detail.
That's true, my little map, yeah, everybody else knew that, because I did have a piece of paper, I apologize, I should've seen, about making arrangements to get you a copy of it, of the, the, kind of the design, and where they would be staked into the ground around the perimeter, so, yes, no, I would never dream of doing any harm to the, the actual parking lot area.
Yeah, Chuck takes it personally.
That's good.
Maybe you spoke with Chuck, correct?
Pardon me?
You've already spoken with Chuck.
Yes, um, Elena did, yes, our vice president did, yes.
Ladies, may I have any questions?
Just the, I believe there was a mention of parking at the water department, and I know Chuck, they're good with that, they just request that you not park in front of the garage bay doors, in case they would have to access equipment, so.
Thank you, thank you for that, I appreciate it, yeah, for overflow parking, in case, because we are blocking off about eight spaces, so that's, gives us an opportunity to have a little extra parking. Any questions or concerns that anybody has?
No, I don't.
Is there a time for the presentation time, or is that?
Yeah, we have a program.
We're hoping about 5:30 p.m.
Okay.
For the presentation, that gives people a chance to arrive, and kind of know where they are, before we try to, you know, it's, you don't wanna welcome 12 people, because people are running a little late, so that's, that's the goal, is 5:30, and then after that, it's kind of on your own, dude.
Sounds great.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Dennis Sack.
I wasn't quite prepared with the audio control here. Is Dennis Sack here, talking about 1214 West Jonas Street, I just had a little outline here, is it okay if I hand this out to the board members?
Yep, Bob.
And there's two sets of the newer plans, maybe give one up top, I think it's sure one down, he was supposed to grab more, but, so anyways, as I've been doing a little bit of work over here, you know, this is a facade approved program, I've watched the continuous flow of people move from the municipal parking lot across the street, to the Seneca, you know, to the Seneca Savings, and part of the walkway is, I believe, on the village, and part of the walkway is on the property of 12 and 14, you know, my proposal was initially to do a larger handicap ramp on the street, well, now, actually talking to Greg, we came up with a, an idea where we could actually make them on the side of the building, on the back of the building, that would now be new, the steps that are gonna be put on there, aren't gonna even project only a few inches farther than what the ones are now, so there's no impact to the sidewalk or the plumbing, but however, we also put on heating the sidewalk in front of the building, and heating the sidewalk, you know, through the, through the alleyway, so that would provide a, you know, maintenance-free, you know, situation to both the handicap, and, and get people to the municipal parking lot. The, you know, if you see the way the sidewalk meanders there, there's water, there's a water shut-off, there's a, a gas shut, you know, a gas shut-off, so it's kind of a crowded alley, and at the same time, right now, people are walking through broken concrete, you know, sidewalk or whatever, so it's, it's a little bit of a stumbling, a trip possibility. So, yeah, I basically wanted to bring this to front of the building, we're gonna get rid of the three doors, and create a single door with a foyer, so it's, there's like a heat, heat barrier when they get inside, and they're not letting their other heat out, we're gonna get rid of the air conditioners on the front of the building, and the facade will be the veneer stone, very similar to what they did at Sals, you know, the lower level, and then larger, larger gray stone, up to the canopy, and a little wrought iron balcony, so it'd be, you know, rather appealing, if, we're trying to go back a little bit more like it was when Mark Baker's grandmother had the, the floor shop there, you know, so it's got a little bit more of that, a little bit more of that look, and as it turns out, that section of sidewalk on, Swiggle Street's probably the worst section of sidewalk, you know, in that, in that, in that corridor, so, the, I guess one of the things that does come up, the fact that we're partially on the village, the sidewalk would partially on village, and it continues onto our property, you know, whether I'm dedicating the right-of-way, or whether, you know, I mean, you know, how that, you know, how that is handled, obviously we're gonna bear the cost of the improvement, and the, and the, and the maintenance of the heating of the sidewalk, and, you know, so forth, and I did kind of outline, you know, the construction, the improvements, you know, improvements to the building, as you probably most know, the deli is gonna be relocating to the liquor store probably in six to eight months, so, so, I see, you know, my preference is to see retail or office there, not another food, you know, it's, the food, food is kind of tough on the parking and the whole thing. As far as the handicap, there already is a handicap inclined to the state road, so, you know, kind of where the, the police cars park, where that first police car parked, and, you know, that would give access to handicap for the whole, the whole block, if anybody needed to get out of the car, it would be the only place that they could really do it, and do it, you know, do it without having to go over a curb cut. So, I guess for that, if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to field them.
I don't have questions, I'm, I was happy to hear that the, not gonna be an issue with the sidewalk, I know we were concerned, last, last year, we had to have a state come in, and take a sign down over by Michael's back service, because our snowplow couldn't get between the sign and the building, so that's a huge concern for us in the winter time, and, so Chuck was, was rightfully concerned that that would be an obstacle, from them going from one end of the street to the other, without having to stop, back up, get out into the road, go down the other end of the corner, come back, and, and make a, you know, a long journey longer, so.
If I may, what, how mu, how far are you coming out? I'm Dan with the Village, I worked for Chuck.
Oh, okay.
How far out is that sidewalk you're gonna put in, coming out, further than what's there?
Well, right now, there are two large steps that come down, okay, so, pretty much, we're just rotating, where you're gonna come out flat, and then the steps will go, will go east and west, rather than directly towards the road, so it's gonna pick up, you know, somewhere about seven or eight inches, seven or eight inches farther than what the steps are now, so you still, they're still well over 10 and a half to 11 feet of sidewalk there.
The concern that we have is, during the dead of winter, when the banks are big, if it's a three or four-foot bank, whatever, and then, our plow's five foot, when he's coming through, he's wide, so, it's gonna encroach us even more, we got the signs there, I mean, that's just.
Well, we're talking, I'm talking to the Barclays office about either eliminating, or, yeah, I mean, it's a redundant sign, but, as I said, that sidewalk's gonna be heated, so you don't have, you're not gonna have a snowpack there.
Truthfully so, but we're, we're gonna have ice.
What's that?
We're gonna have ice, 'cause when that melts off, and it freezes down the road, just like it did at Seneca Federal when they were heated, there was a big ice blob that come down in front of Angry Garlic now, but yes, I, I agree with you, but, are we gonna be able to drive across that?
What's that?
The heated sidewalk?
Yeah, 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 my friend. So is there? Yeah, I mean, Seneca Federal never had much more than a 10 or 12-inch, you know, 10 or 12-inch, and it was, not their snow, it was obviously, it was the road clout snow, but.
No, no, what I'm saying is that when it melted, then it got down the road and it froze, there was a big ice chunk, we'd have to peel it all.
See now, in my, now, my heated sidewalks, the manor, there's never any wat, obviously their system probably wasn't warm enough where, you know, my, practically, that brings, there's never any, there's never any water, I mean, the alley, even where it's not heated, it's, it's dry, all winter long, I've never, you know, never had snow.
What's the clear space between the edge of, currently the edge of the stair, and the signage, do you know?
What is?
He said he's got a five-foot plow.
Right.
And, I mean, is there, is there eight feet?
That's gonna be about 11 feet.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, it's more than that, you know.
What's there now, though? What's, what's between the edge of that new sign, and the current step?
That's what I'm.
Right now, we didn't measure that, because we're talking about.
I guess, I guess I haven't measured the sign, because I'm assuming it's gonna be, you know, moved one way or the other, but even if, even if we put the sign back there where it's heated, then, then they're still gonna be, I mean, if the sign is, I gotta say it's three foot, I gotta say it's three foot and.
Seven or eight feet.
Yes, I mean, I mean Chuck, you know, I looked, I walked into Chuck, and he didn't really see a problem with it, so.
I think from my end, I mean, we really have to see a survey where the property line is.
Now, the building is, the building is.
Can that be crossed?
The building is a property, I think the survey was in that, that.
Okay, you know, how do we, how do we do development outside the property line, it's not really a variance, because you're going onto a different property, you know, that approval would have to come from the state.
Well, the sidewalks on it, the steps are already on.
Well, I, right.
The steps are already on, on the.
They are?
Are not on, on the property, so.
You know, Village would need to approve, and look at liabilities in the alleyway being used, you know, being developed and used, I understand people cross through there now, and now it's probably more of a liability than it has been in a long time, there's a broken fence there, pavers that are not, you know, they're not together, there's, like I said, I mean, there's some, there's some legwork that has to be done, I mean, I would imagine it's gotta go in front of the planning board for the development. Procedurally, are you looking for us to make referrals to the planning board?
Well, yeah, I just wanna know whether I'm gonna waste my time, I mean, the building performs the way it is, I don't need to do anything to it, you know, I'm just, I'm just running it, I'm like.
My opinion is, it sounds like it's a nice improvement to the, the building overall, so I, I think we would try to help.
Yeah, I, I would think it would be a, a natural progress, yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure if, I think, okay, we go in front of the planning board. Right, planning board, architectural review, I, I don't know that there's a, you know, like I said, if, if the development of the steps goes out onto the state roadway, you're not looking at a, you're not looking at a zoning variance, you're, you're, you're looking for, I mean, Bob may have to give me the right language, but I mean, you'd have to, you know, for some type of permission, from the state of New York, license, you know, okay.
Yeah, from Senator Barclays office, they just said simply the Village just needs to write a letter to the state, yeah.
Yeah, I talked to Nicholas from Will Barclays office, about a half an hour, and, you know, we talked about the ADA accessibility issues, or, or solutions, and, you know, they were, the state would be looking for a dedicated space, you know, I was thinking maybe the last space right before the police department, because there is a, there's a drop curb there, if that's, you know, the route we're going here.
Well, and we're actually gonna extend the, Seneca Federal, where they have that retaining wall of those blocks there, that'll be extended with a, a gap, obviously, for the egress, but then they'll pick up three more parking spots in the, in the parking lot.
Okay, that doesn't encroach on Seneca Federal's property, right?
No, so my, but, my three spots would then be approachable from Seneca Federal, which I've already talked to Joe, and, you know, and we're.
And that would be something that the planning board is gonna want to see, probably on paper, the, the, you know, egress easements, or, or allowances across the Seneca Federal property.
Essentially, it's been, you know, through adverse possession, it was, you know, they've already kind of agreed, it's been happening, so it's just, but this way here, it just opens up, it'd be short-term park, it'd be short-term parking for everybody, that's the way we pretty much determined that we would work those parking spots during the day, that they'd be in and out, 20-minute spots, so if there, if there was somebody coming in.
So you're gonna be looking for these spots to be dedicated for somebody who works in an office in this building?
Yeah, now, that, we're gonna, you know, like I said, we determined, I talked to Joe, we're gonna do something for, and, you know, I want, I, I don't care where the people work in the office park, they should park, you know, probably.
Street.
Yeah, they should park farther, so, seems like, yeah, I kinda yell at my customers quite often for taking employee parking shots on the streets, on the Swiggle Street, so, they go, how dare you take an employee's parking spot?
Well, do you have any further questions for Dennis?
Two. What two, what time period are you looking at doing this?
I, I obviously would like to move, you know, before, before winter, you know, the sidewalk and concrete work, and, and, you know, the foyer, you know, so I'm really ready to move, you know, finally.
Congratulations on the planning board. Right, just to, to mention, this is part of the 2020 Streetscape grants, the former owner had applied, and, and received the, the go-ahead for the, the grant funding, and I've spoken to community development, Dennis Sack, obviously, is the new owner of the building, and that carries over to him, in the same portions and amounts that were, were given to the other owners, so. Good, so that'll help a little bit, all right, well, I don't know if anybody else has any questions, I can't speak for everybody, I would try to help as much as I can, so.
Thank you, Mark.
If there are more questions, we can, like, write them up, give them to you, but I think, it's all, it's all important.
Yeah, regards to the meltdown too, there is a storm drain right, right there, midway of the 20 feet, that, there's like 20 feet of sidewalk that'll be heated, and almost halfway, there's a storm drain like five, six inches off the, off the curb, so it's really.
And that's all the kind of stuff that we do, that we do discuss in the planning board, you know, drainage, walkability, access. When is the next planning board meeting? Do you know? The next planning board meeting is the last Tuesday in September. So we would need.
Cause we're not, so I guess I'm confused by planning, if, if we're not changing use, or anything other than.
I'm not sure, I, I was asking procedurally if that would be the next step. Right. Sure the answer. Because of the, because of the village, or, excuse me, the four corners overly district, all property development goes in front of the planning board, any facade redevelopment goes in front of the architectural review, but we're looking at sidewalks, new, you know, new entryway, that, that all goes in front of the planning board.
No, there's no difference, the same doors are just.
I understand, but, you know, we're looking at, you know, redeveloping, I, I mean, this board can waive that requirement to the, to the planning board, but I think it's a, it's a good idea to have that in place, so that we are looking at, you know, the parking, the. Is there a timeline on the 2020 grant program? Not at this time. Do you have to get done certain time? Not at this time.
Okay, well, if the parking improves, and the egress improves, and it's safer, and...
I, I agree that it may not take a lot of, you know, a lot of meetings to get through this, but I mean, they're gonna wanna, I mean, it is in our code that it says it's gotta go in front of the planning board, yeah.
It makes, it makes for better projects, so, because they'll, they'll ask questions that will, that we haven't thought about, and it, it just makes the project better, having gone through the planning process, so. Okay, and, and anything else?
No.
All right, Dennis, thanks a lot for coming in.
Thanks for hearing me out, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis.
We have anybody else for citizen comments?
No.
Let's go to trustees' comments, we'll start with trustee Wilder.
No executive sessions were requested this evening, so, and I will stick to the agenda as far as any other ideas.
No executive session?
No executive session, we'll give you guys a break.
Wow.
Wow.
Very good, Mr. Greg.
I'm all set, Jan Zolli.
How about Megan?
I'd just like to mention that the Baldensville Volunteer Center will be celebrating two years worth of our Volunteers of the Year, we didn't have an opportunity last year to celebrate the 2019 Man and Woman of the Year, who were Tom Perkins and Clara Rose Thomas, so we will be celebrating them, along with this year's Man and Woman of the Year, who, our cameraman, Bob Edget, is this year's Man of the Year, and the Woman of the Year is Janet Tharian. It's not a secret anymore, Andy, we tell them in advance, so that we make sure they show up, so that's gonna be Saturday, October 16th, if anyone is interested in attending the dinner to celebrate these four volunteers, you can call the Volunteer Center office to make a reservation.
Thanks, Meg.
Yep.
I will move on to Mr. Shepherd.
The agenda's fine, thank you.
Okay, Ruth?
Agenda's fine with me, thank you.
Okay, I got a couple things, I wanted to echo from the last meeting, the compliments that were handed out to Fred Thomas, after, on his retirement, he hasn't, wasn't on our zoning board for a long time, but he, he's the only zoning board member who ever called me up with questions, and I know that, when there was a question of, was the fence too high, was the setback not right, he was there and saw it, so he made decisions that were made based on eye-vision judgments, and very, very great addition to our zoning board for as long as he was there, if you ever get a chance to sit down with Fred Thomas, and he can talk from about 75 years ago, when his dad was, worked for the town of Van Buren, he knows so much history about that area out on Ellsworth Road, and going out that way, he is just a fountain of knowledge, and a, just a wonderful guy, we're gonna miss him, I'm sure, just wanna remind people, September 18th is Taste of Baldensville, Paperville Island, move to 10, if you would like to sponsor, you can contact them through tastefiveville.com, and they're hoping by getting enough sponsors, they won't have to charge admission at all, it'll be a free event for people. I, I wanna give some kudos to Greg, and our engineer, Brian Madigan, for great work on our facade application, I know Mark made a comment today on email, after looking at the application, a lot of work went into that, and I would say almost all of it was great, so, hats off to Mr. Humphrey for doing a great job. The court is still, you, you can't just walk into court, you have to get screened at the door, you have to call ahead of time to make sure it's okay for you to come, they're only doing criminal cases, they do have a drop box by the door, the main door into the building, so if you get a traffic ticket, and you just wanna drop it off with a check and an envelope, you don't have to go in and see anybody, you can just put it in the drop box. If anybody's interested in the Baldensville calendar, if you go to Baldensville Calendar Sales on Facebook, you like it, and follow it, you'll get information on when it's going to be for sale, and if you have pictures that you wanna submit, that's the place to contact. I wanted to give a hats off to Lauren Russet, our new Chamber of Commerce Director, who was selected one of the top 40, under 40 people in Central New York, if you know Lauren, she's a walking bundle of energy, she's involved in about 73 different things, and seems to do them all very well, and it was nice to see her get some recognition, nice to know that, that our people will be able to recognize the road coming. I think that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions. Now, we'll move on to department heads, we'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll stick with the agenda there.
All right, thank you, Bob, code officer, Greg.
Yeah, just wanted to, I guess, update for the meeting, that the 2021 facade grant application was delivered to the county yesterday, we had, once we whittled down the application, we had 22 different businesses that will be impacted by this grant, and, you know, the, the last round was very successful, I know we have a few projects that are still outstanding, and most of that's because contractors are very busy right now, and it looks like we're gonna have 22 other businesses impacted, and it's, the main streets are gonna look really good after next year.
So, what it amounts to, to do the simple math for everybody, if, if we get this grant, when we get done with it, 29 businesses in Baldensville will have had some sort of work done in the facade of the building, I mean, think how many business fronts there are downtown, we're talking about, probably about 80% of the businesses. about eighty percent of the businesses will have redone parts of their facade and made their buildings look better, that's just great for the future as far as our business community, very proud of all the people who put the work in to, to submit the applications. We asked them to write letters to help encourage the people who are reading the grant proposal to see why we should be included, and many of the letters were very, very, to the point about how it's been impacted, so, so good job, Greg. Village, Village quarter, come on.
Uh, no, I will stick to the agenda.
Okay. Treasurer, Anna.
Um, I just have, uh, one thing, I just wanna let everyone know that we received a letter stating that we were receiving a few more ARPA funds in addition to the money that we've already received, we will be receiving an additional three thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents, this is due to non-responsive municipalities or municipalities that decided they did not wanna be part of the program. So this year, we will get an additional one thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars, and next year, we will get the same, so our total for the two years for ARPA funds is eight hundred and two thousand, two fifty-three, ninety-nine, just wanna bring that on. And that's all I have unless someone has a question.
Very good, we're, we're in the process of looking at projects that we need done, there's, you're limited, I want you to use the ARPA money for water, sewer, COVID stuff, and we have a lot of water projects, we would like to upgrade our water system basically from end to end, including alarm systems, we, we are waiting to hear about a grant from the state to upgrade the electrical part of the project, you know, the Cannon Street well area, we're looking at cleaning out that well, a lot of different things, there's, there's, uh, pipes and stuff that need to be replaced, that, you know, plumbing and electrical or, yeah, electrical water and that type of stuff, and so we're, we're very, this is, this is a chance for us to get a lot of that done, so, with the help of the Public Works Committee and with Chuck McCollum, we're trying to prioritize, we have the grant, we got half of it this year, and we get the other half next year, so we can take a look at stuff that needs to be done immediately, get that taken care of, and then some of the others put on the back burner for the next go-round, which I think, I think our year basically goes July to July, if someone forgot the money the first month. Okay, we will move on to the Senior Center, Ruth.
Um, well, September is National Senior Center Month, and we do have a full schedule for the month of September, many of our fitness programs are coming back on board, so if you've been looking for those, they are starting up this month, you can find the whole newsletter on all the municipal sites, and of course, you can get one through the Senior Center. We are wearing masks, so whatever program you're coming for, you will be required to wear a mask, so just so folks understand that. Okay, um, our car show went off very, very well, we had a great evening, we had about forty vehicles, it was a fun night with music and food and lots of friendly folks out, so we wanna thank the community for their very generous support of that event, it was great to have it back and happening again. And now we're looking forward to our Walk for the Woods, which this year will be on September 18th, if you wanna walk in person, you can also do it virtually anytime throughout the month of September, again, registration forms are on all the municipal websites, so if you'd like a form, you can find it there, or you could stop by and pick one up from us, and other than that, I will stick to the agenda, thanks.
Very good, and I will, I think it'll be walking, whether I don't know if I'm gonna walk that Saturday morning, or if I'm gonna walk sometime during the week this month, if anybody wants to, you know, bounce with me, that'd be great, and whatever we can do to, to raise some money for the Senior Center, and I might even borrow one of Mr. Gray's dogs to walk with me, so, um, other than that, thanks Ruth, appreciate it. Public Works, Dan Weir.
Mr. Mayor, how are you?
I'm pretty good, Dan.
Uh, just a few things, touch base on the water department first, they built a couple water breaks, one in front of the Sonic, the Sonic of Federal, you guys saw that, it was a hole in the ductal, and then up on One Night, where they're building the house, the water line broke there, they fixed it, and then yesterday, they installed the new water line, so, busy, they're getting there, they got the shipment of the water meters, forty-six thousand warts.
Yes.
They have them, they're, so they're back on track with those. Shifting gears to the highway, we finished top grinding, that was Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, so that's done, the brush pile's clean, we're back on track taking down the ash trees, we were down for a little bit, but we're back up, we did ten today up in Baldwin Hill, I had the opportunity, we're putting letters out now to the, each homeowner who has a tree, so, I go through, I knock on the door, talk to them, hand the letter, it's a little more personal, that's a little easier, people come home, the tree's gone, like, what the heck happened, well, now they know, there's a letter, and we talked to them, so, hopefully Baldwin Hill will be done next week, not that many more left, then we'll move back to Candleway. Some good comments came from the boaters' trail, obviously, we had the flood, it was shut down, ten boats over there, and they told all of our people that were cleaning and doing the work, they said, best place to be is in Baldensville, they loved it here, the residents would come by, ask them if they need to go to the store, or, you know, if they needed something, so, just good comments to come back to the board, that, I'm very happy with the being here, so, other than that, I'll stick to the agenda, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dave.
Dan, sorry, can I just ask?
You may.
The fall brush pickup, when does that restart the, every week instead of the two weeks?
I don't know the actual date, but I believe it starts in October.
Okay.
First of the day in October.
Okay.
It used to be September, and then it got moved to October.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep.
The newsletter is on the website if anyone would like to check it out or wanna definitely, definitely.
Finally get my spring weed done, so I wanna know when I can get my, my brush picked up, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Weir. And we'll move on to the police department, Chief Lefencheck.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just to echo Dan Weir's comments, there, one of the boaters, it was along the, the wall there, did have an incident, and, and our officers responded, I think I forwarded that email to all the members of the board, they're very appreciative of our, of our officers' rapid response and handling of that incident, and received a lot of positive comments from, from the boaters over there as well, for those of you that don't know, our officers perform foot patrol along the, the wall there and the Southwest Trail on a regular basis every day, and engage with the boaters just to ensure that, if there's anything that they need, or if there's any issues, they know who to call and, and how to respond, so, that was a positive thing, and then, also, Mayor, if I could, obviously, school is going to be starting up next week, I would just ask the motoring public to please slow down, keep an extra eye out for the school buses, stop for those school buses, inevitably, we will have a couple drivers every year report to us that vehicles have gone past their bus, that's a very dangerous situation, puts children at risk, and we would just ask that people pay attention as, as those youngsters and those school age children are out waiting for the bus, some, some of them do walk, depending as to the location to, to school, they choose to do so, so, the motoring public could just be aware of that, and other than that, Mayor, unless there's questions or comments by the board.
I just, for people who didn't see that letter, basically, it was a 911 call, and they said when, within two minutes, our police officers were there, and it was interesting that they said that the flashlights coming down the trail were like huge relief because they knew help was there, and I thought, isn't that nice for somebody who's probably from out of town, doesn't know what they might be getting into, and, and our police are there in two minutes, that'd be a memory they'll never forget about Baldensville, so, I, I think I told you before, hence, you know, tell the, tell your officers that, pretty proud of them, and I think our community is, should be very proud of our police officers, so, nice job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next up is pending business, this is a, an amendment to a resolution, can I get a motion to amend Resolution number ninety-five slash 2021 to read, resolve to purchase two hundred new water meters at a cost of forty-six thousand dollars, with funds to be taken from the ARPA funds account, the original approved resolution stated that the funds will be taken from the water and sewer accounts.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any question, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, carry. New business, um, let's see here, can I get a motion to appoint Margaret Halloran as a member of the zoning board of appeals effective October 1st, 2021 at a rate of fifty dollars a month?
Move.
Second.
We have a resignation of Fred Thomas left in vacancy, and Mrs. Halloran will fill that spot, and she's excited, she wants to do this, and I'm happy that she's gonna be a part of our zoning board. All right, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, carry, just so the public knows, we still are looking for an alternate for the zoning board, so if you have an interest in getting involved in the village, that's a real nice way to start, especially as an alternate, because you go to meetings and not be in the middle of it, but you can hear and learn, and eventually maybe be part of the zoning board of appeals, and if you wanna do something nice for your community, that's a great way to do it, so if you do, contact me, contact the village clerk, and we'll get things moving. Okay, move on to item B, this is a discussion, possible action to improve the policy of the village of Baldensville that the use of tobacco, marijuana, vaping, electronic cigarettes, or any similar substances are prohibited, mentions all the parks, but I think people have suggested that we amend it to also include all village property, you know, parking lots, buildings, that type of stuff, not just parks, you should all have a copy of the smoke-free policy, it says designated parkland and facilities, facilities will be signed, the superintendent of Public Works will meet with village employees and officials to enhance awareness, anybody violating the policy will be reminded and asked to comply before being subject to objection from the park. It's clear we don't want cigarettes in our parks where there's kids, both for the smoke factor and, or maybe not encouraging them to smoke, and basically, the law of the state, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, is that you can't smoke marijuana, or you can't smoke cigarettes, so that if we spread and make it clear what parts of the village are included, we want, does anybody wanna make a motion tonight, do we wanna put that off for further discussion, are you comfortable with saying all village property? Bob, is that adequate?
If anybody, Chief Lefencheck is the senior whip of the pack.
Okay, Michael?
I noted that Paper Mill Island is not included, I was just curious, what's that thought process was?
I made a comment about this email, said we should add Paper Mill Island, in my opinion, we should add the, the area over by the square, at least in the area that's bracketed by the park, parking lot and the trail.
Agreed.
I know people come out of some of the restaurants over there and they smoke outside the buildings, but I don't think we should have them wandering over in areas where kids might be congregating, like by the fountain and other areas, so, so I would agree, we should add Paper Mill Island, any, any facilities that are used as park-like type facilities.
So is it adequate, Bob, to say?
Yes, but I, I, I would suggest contemplating, if you're gonna adopt the policy, but I would also suggest adopting the code, in our code, in our parks, for example, alcoholic beverages are prohibited, and many municipalities do have provision in their park and recs portion of their code prohibiting smoking in, in the area, the state law prohibits it in playgrounds, but not in areas where recreation, such as softball or, or any other athletic court takes place, so, I, I, the policy would be fine, but I, I think the enforcement of it might be a little better, and, and also, it might be a little bit more upfront to the public, and also the future to have it as part of the code. I, I would agree from enforcement aspect, Mr. Mayor, only because I think the police department's probably gonna be the ones called on this, and we're gonna have to be the ones to tell people to leave some location if they refuse to comply, and if they don't, if they refuse to leave, then we're gonna be the enforcement arm on a potential trespass complaint, so, to have something in the code would be beneficial to us, because at three o'clock on a Saturday afternoon, we're the only portion of the village that's open, so, we're gonna get that phone call.
Yeah, so do we, do we at this point want to proceed and say we wanna adopt a smoke-free policy for the entire properties owned by the village, and then in addition, put it in the code?
All right, so we're gonna adopt that as a policy, and as a result of that policy, I'll draft the legislation and get it out to the board for review.
Okay.
I, I have a question, if we're talking about all village-owned properties, does that include public parking lots, and it's, I mean, does that make sense that anyone walking through a parking lot, you know, behind village square or behind, you know, the, the village hall, does that make sense that we're gonna try and enforce that, and the chief is shaking his head, so.
I think we're looking for parking buildings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say parking buildings, and clearly, you know, I don't think we want someone smoking right outside the door of the village hall or one of those locales and, and things, so.
Maybe stay within ten feet of any village-owned building or park, I don't know what language would be appropriate, but.
All right, I'll take a look, many municipalities have done this, Town of Huntington, down in Suffolk County is a good code too, so, I'll, I'll take a look at that.
All right, do we wanna put that off till the next meeting?
Uh, we want to, we can get the science moving if we adopt the policy, is that correct?
That's, that's the other thing, yeah.
So if we adopt the policy, at least the intent is to have areas that are common areas where people can congregate, not have, make that smoke free, I think we're gonna adopt that policy and then come up with a code and define it further, so.
Does somebody wanna try, come up with a, a motion?
Well, cause the policy as it states right here, though, hasn't been edited to reflect Paper Mill Island, Baldwin Canal Square.
Right, I could give you some edits, I just made them out of this.
Okay.
All right, just move the motion forward, I'll make a motion to adopt this policy, and read your edits. Yeah, so I, I'd like to, go ahead, Dan, if you wanna make.
No, you make the motion, right?
I'll make the motion that we adopt the policy in the village, that the village of Baldensville is a smoke-free community, and that use of tobacco, marijuana, vaping, electronic cigarettes, or any other similar substances are prohibited within any village-owned facilities, including Mercer McCary, Diane Reeves, Little League, and community parks, County Paper Mill Island, Baldwin Canal Square, and their associated facilities, and that, that last part might include parking lots, so I think we need to be careful on that, but that's, that was the edits that I, those are the edits that I made.
Any, do you have a motion, do you have somebody you wanna make a second?
I'll second.
For discussion purposes, can I just ask a question, at the police department, we have a policy that no tobacco or any of these things can be utilized in, in one of our vehicles, what's the village policy on that, I'm just asking a question, I don't know if this is supposed to pertain to that or not, or if that's left up to the department heads?
Department head, I think.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, we've had policy for years on that.
Yeah, complete control, if you're, if you're on them, you can tell them what to do.
Yeah. Good point, Andy, all right, so we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, carry. Any, any other village business that we need to conduct tonight before we get ready to dismiss? to dismiss?
Greg is raising his hand.
I just wanted to, uh, you know, Danny mentioned the new house that's being constructed. Um, there's, there's no permit for a house yet, but the old fire department house, I didn't update the board yet on this because it was, uh, it was demolished last week. Um, the old fire department house at 62 East Oneida Street was demolished, and the owner of the property is gonna be building a, a new home there. So, just wanted to update the board.
I see.
Mayor?
Yeah, saw the excavation.
There's, well, that's, that's the excavation of the original foundation, plus they've dug out a little more, um, while they had the excavator on site. But right now, there is no construction permit.
It was great going by there the other day. I was shocked. I mean, I had a, I did a double take. Where'd that house go?
So, that's, that's the. Yeah, that's the water tank break they had to work on.
Yeah, nice to see it gone. I, although I did see on Facebook, a fellow who must have grown up in that house was a little sad that it was, his house was gone, but he also realized that it was in terrible shape, that people have since had not taken care of it at all. All right, um, if we have no other business, um, our next meeting will be in two weeks, November 16th. Um, can I get a motion to pay bills? Is that it?
Moved.
Second, then?
All in favor? Aye. Closed? Carry. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:22?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Carry.